We have already adjourned from our executive session. And so we are starting our study session just a little bit late. And Dr. Jennifer Fletcher, who is the Executive Director of Assessment, Accountability and Research, will present the proposed Journey 2025 metrics for the school year 2223 as discussed and developed with the Governing Board. Dr. Fletcher?
Thank you, President Madam President, members of the Board. As the title denotes, we're going to discuss our Board Achievement Goals for this academic school year 2223. We have two key objectives, right? Review what we've done in the past and discuss any potential modifications. Apologies, you know, we have an abundance of goals and components within each goal. So you're going to see a lot of words and data on the slides. The good news is the majority of this presentation of our achievement goals are not changing. We're not modifying, adjusting the rubrics. We're staying strong on the course that we've established and continuing to reach those goals. So Board Goal One is our Equity in Student Perception, Achievement and Access. It includes our Climate Survey, Part A, right? Eighty percent of our students agree or strongly agree about having a positive climate and dispositions. School Discipline, Enrollment Rates in Advanced Programs, State Assessment, ACT Assessment and Graduation Rates. What's important here is those words that are highlighted in blue font. Those are additions that we are making. So 1D includes AASA. That was last year's state achievement test. In prior years, you saw AZM2 or AZ Merit. Same test, new name. And then the state also added ACT Aspire, Grade Nine Testing last year. So we are including that. And then the second half of that statement, if you recall at the Board Retreat, we discussed adding a growth indicator. So not only do we have a target for our students, but we want to ensure that our subgroups that aren't making the target are growing. So what we've done is we've made this an or option. So in essence, you can achieve the target of 60% in ELA and math. Or if you don't achieve the target, we'd like to see you grow from your prior year proficiency rate. And I'll detail that a little bit more here in a second. And then we did the same thing with 1F, Graduation Rates. We have a target of 93%, which just as a reminder, is incredibly high compared to the state average, right? Which is around 78, 80%. And we want to either see their students and our subgroups meet the target, or if they're not meeting the target, we want to see them grow from the prior year graduation rate. You have your rubric scores there, but those numbers don't really mean a whole lot until you see the next slide, which is what are those components, right? What are the targets? What are we trying to establish? So if you look at A, it's still that 80% for a four. And you'll see the declining percentages from there. Student Discipline, we want events below .1 per student enrolled. Our Advanced Placement is at 25.5% and above. Then you'll see 1D. We have a target of 60%. Or what we're going to do is compare the prior year proficiency percentage for each subgroup to current year proficiency percentage. And if there is a growth, right? An increase in their proficiency percentage rate, they will earn a four. If they do not grow and they do not meet the target, then we will use the pre-established percentages for what a 3, 2 and a 1 was. We didn't want to attempt to say how much growth on a rubric indicator every subgroup should have, because what is enough growth? Is it half a percent? Is it 1%, right? We really want to just focus on achieving growth. And that is why we put the growth solely into the rubric score of four. The same applies to the graduation rate. So you either meet the target. If you do not meet the target, we look to see if you grew from your prior year graduation rate for that subgroup. If you grew, you earn a four. If you did not meet the target or grow, then we will use the already pre-established targets for what a 3, 2 and a 1 means. Does that make sense? Okay, just making sure before we proceed. And just a reminder, these are all of the subgroups that are included. At the Board Retreat, I was interested in adding our fluent English proficient students to this subgroup indicator. We still are. However, at this time, the data that we use for 1D and 1F comes from the state and they do not disaggregate that subgroup on its own. So we have requested that they can look at doing it that way. So we can include it in our Board Achievement Goals. Also because that's valuable data for all of the districts, right? To know your students who have reclassified out of being English learners, moving them as a subgroup. So we will continue to monitor that. And if they do disaggregate the data for us, we will add that subgroup. And just one other note while I'm back on this slide. We decided instead of adding growth and proficiency into separate, like a 1D and then another a 1G and a 1H, right? That would be doing a disservice to our students. It'd be inequitable, because if you don't make your target and you didn't make growth, now we've done a double ding in essence to the district, right? And there are a lot of variables involved. And that's unfair to our students. So that is why you see it as an or option in 1D and 1F. Okay, Board Goal Two, Grade Level Proficiency. So you see, we still have our state assessments. All we've done is add on their ACT Aspire. And ACT, because those are new state assessments for our Grade Nine and Grade 11 students. Same target to exceed the state by 15 percentage points in at least 75% of the subject areas. We have our K6 Growth Indicator that is using School City and DIBELS. So again, we do ELA math and science in our growth indicator. We do have statewide assessment data on AZPSI that we are going to look at piloting this year to include in 2A. But at this time, that's only focused on ELA and math. For Goal Three is Students in Third Grade Reading at Grade Level. So again, the same percent of third grade students performing at grade level in ELA. This is related to the Move On When Reading statute. And then our Growth Indicator, students in third grade will demonstrate expected growth, maintained or exceeded on their School City ELA assessment. Board Goal Four is our indicators for career and college readiness. Nothing has changed on this, with the exception of we, we hope, service learning hours can be included again this year for the first time in several years, thanks to the pandemic. So we fully anticipate service learning hours will be collected and included. So you have your scholarship dollars, service learning hours, National Merit Scholars, Flynn Scholars, Advanced Placement Tests and Advanced Placement Scores, as well as all of our ACT results for math, English, reading, science, international baccalaureate, dual credit hours and career and technical education. And just a reminder, we suspended in the Board Retreat, the pipeline data, right? For the community colleges and the Arizona universities. We are still working on gaining access to the university data. We now have a new connection at AVOR. The Assistant Executive Director of the State Board of Education recently left his role and is going to work for AVOR. So fingers crossed, we can have better access to data starting in a few weeks. Board Goal Five, Student Dropout Rate. So you'll recall in the spring, well, summer, spring, summer, at the Board Retreat, we modified the rubric to compare dropout rate to the Arizona State dropout rate, instead of having a static number. So we would like that to continue, because it's a more fair and equitable calculation. And then Chronic Absences also will be back this year, fingers crossed. It has also been excluded for the last several years, thanks to COVID. Board Goal Six, Graduation Rate. So we evaluate the four-year graduation rate. Again, a change we made in the spring, comparing it to the state four-year graduation rate. That allows for the fluctuations of pandemics and other natural things and not a static target for the district. And then we look at the percentage of ninth grade students who attain their 5.5 credits during their freshman year in high school. Board Goal Seven is our Market Share. So we look to see that we have a mobility rate less than 2.5% within the district. Board Goal Eight is our Employer of Choice. If you recall, in the spring, we also at the Board Retreat removed 8A and 8C, what they were previously called. They were those survey questions, because it was unfair to reward people dollars based on a survey that we want you to honestly fill out for us. So we removed those. We are still collecting that data. West Group is still administering this survey. We are still using that data to inform the district on how to proceed. It is just no longer part of the Board Goal. Board Goal Nine, District of Choice, as measured by a letter grade assigned by our parents, using an A or a B. We'd like to see at least 90%. Board Goal Ten, Percentage of Dollars Spent in the Classroom. To get a four, we like to be in the top 10% of all districts. This is from the Auditor General's Annual Report. Board Goal Eleven, Outside Contributions. These blue numbers just indicate that we have updated them for the current year based on the Maintenance and Operations Budget that was approved. Board Goal Eleven, Communication with Our Community. Again, at least 85% of responders to our West Group Survey rate CUSD as an A or a B with respect to communication. Let me stop there. Any questions? All right.
Actually, actually, yes, I do have a question. So as we're looking at, so, okay. Two weeks ago, we talked about the school letter grades. And in that model, they were talking about various CTE measurements and various measurements for chronic absences. And we've had those in our Board Achievement Goals for years on those. But I guess in the future, do you think we need to look at those a little more carefully or perhaps align them to what an A would be with, for a school rating with those school letter grades? Just something to think about.
Yeah, that's a tricky question. I have so many thoughts. Yes and no, right? I guess it depends, because an A is defined by the State Board of Education numerically. I am not sure we've ever received clear guidance on what truly defines what an A is qualitatively, right? What does that mean? So you don't want to necessarily align something that may not, doesn't match up, right? But I think it's informative and we can certainly evaluate how they're calculating it and if we should replicate or do something similar that works for us.
And just something to, I guess, keep in mind that would help all of this kind of mesh with the whole overall assessment of our, of our district and achievement of our district, so.
Yeah, and just.
And Madam President, one, important to show, one is attitudinal. So one is, the parent is more attitudinal. With the cut scores changing based on.
Hey Frank, I can't hear you. Can you speak to the mic?
Sure, I'm always accused of speaking too loudly. But I will go ahead and, can you hear me now, Jason?
Yes, go ahead, thank you.
Okay, good, good. With this being a more of a qualitative measure of our parents feeling the overall satisfaction of the school district based on the education of the whole child, programs that they're in and all that, I, I'd almost recommend that we keep them separate, because when the state does their cut score, it's really based on some economic conditions too, that they're looking at. And so I'm not always sure if that's a true reflection as to how communities feel about their schools. And I think there's a lot of value in the fact of how our parents locally feel about Chandler Unified School District.
Well, and I was really just talking about the CTE portion of the grades and the chronic absences portion of the grades, so. Because I know they have certain specific, I believe, I recall there were specific numbers in the chronic absences. And if you were above a certain percentage of students who had chronic absences, you would get dinged basically and would not get all the points, so.
Yeah, and we can look at doing with chronic absence like we did with dropout and grad rate, because it compares to a state percentage. So we can absolutely, that's probably an easier, more feasible one that would make alignment with some of the changes we made last year.
And it would be more of a direct comparison off of the state number.
Instead of a static target for the district.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Okay, fireworks, because this is exciting. We, for the first time ever, have disaggregated our Board Achievement Goals for each of our schools, right? In an effort to focus on continuous improvement, this not only shows them how they're contributing, or not contributing, right? But shows them all of their data points where we can, also disaggregated by subgroup. So I'm really, I'm really excited to show you this. I'm speechless. It's exciting for us. So district level goals, Board Goals Nine, 10, 11 and 12 can't be disaggregated. Those are district level. But everything else, they are able to see. So this is a screenshot, no schools included. We're not, we're not here to call people out. But they have access to see their school and everyone else's school, so they can make comparisons, partner up, right? Talk to other schools, see what's going well, what's not going well. You'll see across the top, each of the Board Goals, 1 through 8. And then you'll see the rubric. And obviously, an NA means this didn't apply to you. So it shows how they fared on the overall indicator. And then here's just a snapshot of some Board Goals. So on the left, you have a high school one, Board Goal Five, just a snippet of it. And then on the right, you have for an elementary school, what they would see for Board Goal Three. Again, as you recall, last year, we had a decrease in the number of advanced placement tests. That's why you see the, the color red, but you also see the numbers. So they can see how they are contributing to the overall district total, because at the top, they'll also see the district line. And then for their Equity Indicator, right? They can see all of the data by each subgroup. And that number is the number of students who are meeting the target. And then I can't screenshot a hover, but if you were in Tableau, you can hover over this and it gives them more details. So how many met the target? How many are the total number of students, right? Because while the colors are important, the context and the narrative surrounding that data is also important, part of the conversation. And so they can hover over it, get the details and then have conversations with their site leadership around goal setting. How are we going to work to improve this, right? Are there particular subgroups? You can see in that first line, American Indian or Alaskan Native, that maybe we need to establish a goal, work to improve. And we're really excited and we hope they are using it.
I just have a little detail question.
Yeah.
For Advanced Placement Scores, why are they like double-digit numbers? The slide that you had the high school in, that one, yeah. See how it's like 81, so many.
There is a decimal point in there. It's a percentage.
Right, but it's 81.3.
Thirty-seven percent, I believe is the passing. I think it's a passing rate.
Oh, gotcha, okay. I'm like, it should be like zero to five, so, okay.
I know, that's why the hovers are helpful, but you can't screenshot a hover. And just so you know, they have a whole page that tells them all the details they need to know. I just didn't screenshot that for you, yeah.
This is great. I really love seeing the, the school level data so that the schools really can be a part of the success and part of the solution for implementing and achieving these achievement goals. So I'm, I'm very, very glad that we were able to get this down to that level. It's taken a few years to really be able to, to do that. But I think that, I think all of our schools need to feel included and, and that they are part of the successes of Chandler Unified School District, so. Mr. Olive, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, thank you. I would, I would like to know about the state's school letter grades. Like, when are we going to see those or do you have any news on those?
Yep, so the State Board held their meeting last, nope, this is still Wednesday, Monday. They had conversations around cut score models. Three models were presented, what's called a classic model or a 70, 80, 90 split, which in essence says if you earn 70% of the points, right? You're a C, 80% a B and so on. That one was thankfully turned down immediately, even though it was not an action item. It was information only that would yield most of the schools in the state Cs, Ds or Fs. Then they had what they called a prior cut score model. So using the cut scores that were utilized in 2019, which were also the same ones as 2018, 2017. And that one fared really well for schools in the state for K8. Was not as successful for high schools, because high schools had a new assessment, ACT. So then there was also what's called a standard deviation or a renorming model for both K8 and 912 that says, okay, let's take the average total of points. That becomes a C. We look at one standard deviation above, that's a B. Two standard deviations above is an A. And then we do the same thing below. So the standard deviation model, yep, fared better for 912.
Basically.
Yep, go ahead.
So is this basically grading on a curve?
Kinda, kinda. It's not, yeah, a little bit. It's in essence, I mean, when you have a new state assessment, you do have to reevaluate the model, right? Because it is being scored and graded differently than the prior assessment. So for 912, the standard deviation model fit better. For K8, the prior year cut score model fit better, because nothing changed about the assessment. So what the State Board is tasked with is now going and speaking with the constituents. They have until October 17th. That is their next board meeting where it will be an action item. They will have to vote on models and cut scores, well, cut scores for the models. After that, as soon as ADE can, they will release letter grades to the districts. Districts have two weeks then to appeal the letter grade if there was a data issue or a significant event that may have caused a data issue. So we are waiting right now. ADE will push data into ADE Connect for us to evaluate each of our schools. And they will tell us our total points. And then we wait and then we can use that to determine what cut score model would be better or how we would fare. I'm not sure we get a say, but.
Right, Ms. Love?
Oh, sorry.
I was just going to ask, since the ACT is designed to see if students are ready for college and not every student goes to college, can you explain how the letter grade accommodates for that?
So what they do is they just use an ELA and a math score and establish proficiency levels, just like they do for AASA. And ELA is a merge of English, reading and writing. It's an average of those scores. And then they, they have their psychometricians establish the benchmarks essentially for what each level is, and that's how they put it into a, a letter grade. So it's not a college ready, like that college ready number may not be equivalent to a proficient result.
And is the district doing anything to make sure that students who have accommodations are actually getting those when they take the ACT?
Yeah, we have quite a few students who submit their accommodations into ACT and those go in for approval. And I know that because I see each one of them.
So it lines up pretty much with, if we look at all the list of who gets extra time, they're all getting extra time on the ACT. Because that's definitely been a barrier for many years.
Yeah. I think having it as a state assessment has actually helped that.
Ms. Love?
I don't really have a question, but just kind of like a comment. Thank you so much for making the changes in the employer of choice, because as shared in past meetings, that really bothered me that that was included in there in terms of like survey data and scoring it and using it against like our staff. So thank you so much. And I really do love the disaggregated like data. I think that's going to be a game changer in terms of like how schools can kind of use data to kind of like target certain things and create like certain like interventions that may work for one site. And, you know, maybe it doesn't work for the other, the other site, right? So it really is kind of, I see it as like an equity thing in a sense. So thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Ms. Brunner, any other questions or comments? Mr. Olive? All right, thank you so much.
Nothing else, great.
Madam President, members of the Board, I just want to, I just want to thank our assessment team under, under Dr. Fletcher. It's not only assessment, but I think you can see more accountability built in, especially with disaggregating the scores all the way down to the schools. Before, you know, we'd see the district-wide achievement goals and, you know, no other board that I know of actually measures their success as well as you do and provides the feedback. But by taking the achievement goals for the district and the priorities that you've set for the district as achievement goals and actually breaking them down by school, it didn't happen overnight. Nobody provides that to us. Her team had to, had to do that. And it's been well received, because I don't think ever before we've had conversations as to how does your individual school, except for scores, right? How do they compare as a district when we look at the metrics? And the metrics, the measurement, but definitely each one of those goals is an achievement goal for the district. And so I want to thank you very much, because it was a, maybe we can get to this and this would be really good if, and you made it arrive. And so our principals and administration have been introduced to it. And our executive directors are working with them as they look at their reviews and, and discuss that as to how they're performing. And so we look forward to reporting out how that's being used. And you ultimately should see a change in the measurement of our achievement goals that you set forth for the district. So appreciate you and your team. And I can see why you had fireworks in that slide. It is exciting.
Probably the first time I used a more exciting backdrop.
That's true.
Great, thank you so much. We will take about a five-minute break while Mrs. Berry prepares to give us information about the annual financial report. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. Tonight, we have our annual financial report for the 2122 school year. And Mrs. Berry will be presenting this evening. Mrs. Berry?
All right, well, good evening, Madam President, members of the Board. And for people that are on the phone, I think Joel Wirth and Jason Oliver are both on the phone. Tonight, we're going to review the annual financial report. And I'm going to do it a little bit different than I have in the past. And Mrs. Brunner actually had asked for this, requested. So I hope I'm meeting, meeting your needs. And also, Mr. Wirth had the same request as Laura also had. So both saying, can we look at this a little bit different than we have in the past? And when you go online, you'll be able to see all of the specific reports. There are the actual annual financial report. They're pages long. They're about 16 pages. And there's a food service report, a school by school report, a classroom site fund report, some COVID reports. And then we also attach some of our internal Excel sheets that show you comparisons of years. And that's actually, a lot of times, I would use a number of slides to go over that, which is a lot of numbers on one slide. And I, I tried to change that in the presentation coming up. But again, the annual financial report is something important, because it's what we review for last year. It tells us where we spent our money. And it's a tool that we actually use to help us for the future, to determine what we need to spend money on or where did we spend money and was that effective or not effective? And as we look at our Journey 2025 and we go into Journey to Excellence in the future, this is just one thing that we use to help us in the future when we make decisions. So tonight, I'm going to review the money that we already spent. Now, you already approved the budget for 2021, 22. You had approved a proposed budget and adopted budget and a couple revised budgets throughout this last fiscal year. And now we're just going to cover everything that was spent in that fiscal year. So we're going to talk tonight about why we have the annual financial report. We're going to review the fiscal health of the district. I think that's always important to talk about. Talk about the alignment to our strategic plan. And then we're going to request tonight in a board meeting for your approval of the FR. That's required by law. So a couple of things just to review. We have our fiscal year goes from July 1st. And this is the fiscal year of 2021 that started last year through June 30th, 2022. We have what's called an encumbrance period. I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, July 1st, 2020, thank you Barb, through June 30th, 2021. Let's hear, I apologize, that's wrong. Okay, the fiscal year is actually July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. The sheet is wrong on top. The encumbrance period is included, that's where you have revenues and expenditures that are for six. are for 60 days afterwards, and we pay our bills during that period of time. So we have 60 days to pay all of our bills that come in. So for example, if supplies came in by June 30th, you have to pay the bills in July or August. If you have a service that came in, you have to pay it. Now, if something physically came in in July or August, you have to roll that into the next fiscal year. But you have 60 days to pay those bills. Then on the grants, you have a completion reports that are due by the end of September. That's why we finish up all of our grants. They give us a time period for that. And then the annual financial report is actually due by October 15th. So you have paid bills, you've made sure your completion reports are in for your grants, you've done all your journal entries, and then you do the annual financial report. Now, why is this important? Well, it's important because the auditor general gives us the reports to do so that they can compare us and they can apples-to-apples comparison the best of our ability to other district schools throughout the state. So it's really important. They put the forms together, send those out, and then they use that for the state superintendent, and then ultimately that goes up to the federal government. Why is this report, why is the annual financial report important? Well, it's a measuring tool. We use some of the metrics from it for our journey to 2000, the journey 2025. It captures, of course, all of our revenues, expenditures, transfers. Also, it helps us create our audit statements and financial statements for our auditors. It reviews the fiscal health and it helps us to make sure that we've coded things correctly, we have things aligned, we have things coded out to departments and schools. Where are we under or over spending budgets? It helps us review that and take a look at it to see if we've got any issues. And then it also helps us see if there's trends, something that we need to look at, where we've been spending year after year over or under budgets and why, or what, what we've been doing in particular areas. And that helps us calculate indirect costs. Those are a number of things that we can look at and we use and we pull that data for different reports throughout the year. So who uses the report? A lot of different people use the report. We use the report for numbers that we pull out and talk about when we go out to the public. Our bondholders use it, our district auditors use it, the Arizona Department of Education uses it, stakeholders use it, the auditor general's office uses it, and the state superintendent. It's where we get the numbers that ultimately go up to the federal government. And you'll see different numbers in different reports that are used by our state and the feds. So let's just dive into the fiscal health. Instead of giving you charts full of information, which you are welcome to go in and look at the Excel sheets that we've attached, that are, are internal documents, you're gonna see that when you take every single fund that we have in our school district, you're going to see that we have spent $550 million. That, now, we are the second-largest school district behind Mesa. I don't think Mesa's budget is, reflects, it's obviously larger. I think that it's about $200 to $300 million more than us. They are quite a bit larger than us. They have 60,000 kids, where we have around 42,298 average daily members. We have about 45,000 warm bodies in our school, but the average daily membership, which is calculated a little differently, is 42,298. So being the second-largest school district in the state, spending $550 million, we're spending $12,981 per student. Now, of course, we built a high school last year, right? So a portion of that, 12,981, is in there for bonds. We also have adjacent ways. We have cash funds, our maintenance and operations, our capital. All of those funds wrapped together, we're at 12,981. Now, if you pair that back and you just say, what are the four normal funds we have? MNO, capital, Indian Gaming, and Classroom Site Fund that everyone gets, that's about $8,500 per a child. So, but once you bring in every single fund, $12,981. So diving into the numbers just a little bit more, with over 5,000 employees, we have about 5,200 employees, and we have about 45,000 average kids who come every day, but the average membership is 42,298 kids. Our biggest fund is our maintenance and operations fund, and that is approximately 91% of our MNO fund goes to salary and benefits for people. And that's because we're a people industry. Obviously, almost 50,000 people are almost showing up every day on our campuses, and that's who we take care of, right? So it takes bodies and peoples to educate and to support those students every day. And that's where the majority of our largest fund, our operating fund, goes to. So how much do we spend in our maintenance and operations fund? Well, we spent $314 million this last year in MNO. And majority of that is in our instructional support, instructional service, and direct instruction area. So our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our librarians, counselors, speech pathologists, the people who are directly connected, our nurses, all of those are part of the people who connect with our kids every day. That's where the majority of our dollars go. Then we have a small portion that goes into administration. That's everyone from the district administration to our principals, to their secretaries, to all of our HR departments, our business departments, technology departments, our warehouse. All of those people that support in that arena are called and considered administration. And then there's a chunk in gray that's other, and that includes food service, transportation, supplies. All of those are in that category. Now, majority of that is honestly is supplies and utilities. About 10% typically is in the utility area, and a big chunk is in our supplies for our transportation area, either with supplies for the buses to fix them or ultimately the gas that takes to get those kids to and from school. All right. So on our, on the capital side, we spent $16.2 million in expenditures this fiscal year. And most of the capital stuff that we have, that we expense dollars on, are our white fleet, for example, for our support service teams, our warehouse teams, our technology teams, food service, those types of things, our rangers, because white fleet cannot be purchased underneath our bond. So white fleet comes out of capital. Also, our textbooks come out of capital, and our, some of our technology budget comes out of tech, of capital. Now, this fund has massively changed, as you know, and we're finally restored to fully restored this year, this upcoming year, the one we're operating in now. Last year, we were almost fully restored. But if you remember, we were down to $2.5 million at one time in this fund because they had cut about 90%. Now, we're fully restored. That was a huge effort that was undertook about five years ago to restore capital, and we are almost back to fully restoring capital. Classroom Site Fund, you're gonna see that on one of your pages in the FR. The Classroom Site Fund, we spent $28 million this year in Classroom Site Fund. And as you all know, sales tax was up drastically, right? This past year, we went from over $400 two years ago per child to a budget of over $700 per child. So it went up. Sales tax, as you know, has gone up in our state due to construction, but also due to sale of goods. As you know, like at Amazon, people are ordering stuff online, and then there's a tax on top of those consumable goods. Between all of that, we have a number of revenue sources that have increased in our state. And so sales tax is up, and it's up quite a bit. So with that, we have always had a certain portion of our contract and then the amount of performance pay that comes out. And that is on, you can see on the left-hand side, 7.6% of our contract and $3,200 of performance pay were ultimately funded out of Prop 301. And that had been for a number of years. But with the additional money, we also gave out a $1,000 stipend to staff before spring break. And then the staff had the ability to access $1,500, which the majority of staff did by completing eight hours of, of professional development. In our federal state dollars, that has increased. The entitlements have stayed pretty consistent related to Title I, which are allocated from the federal government down through the state and then to us. Also, our special education, which is our IDA basic grants, some of our preschool grants, all of those are pretty consistent and stay consistent throughout the years. But our ESAR, as you know, we've got additional money from ESAR and from additional federal dollars. For example, we got an additional $6 million in E-rate dollars related to computer devices that Colleen Flannery and her team applied for. Other things have came in through community ed and state funds that have been available during this period of time. And so really, what did we do with those funds, different than we did with our regular entitlements that we get each year that we, when we approve our budgets? And really, that helped us to focus on our students' needs. We were able to bridge some of those gaps. And I think that you heard about our math. We really focused on math, and you can see the test scores then improved in those areas. We also helped to, during the COVID process, to help that divide on Wi-Fi access and not, giving kids some access to Wi-Fi devices if they didn't have that. We wanted to make sure every kid was engaged, so we had computer access for kids. We supported the whole child in a lot of different ways, as through some of our strategies that we implemented at each of our schools. We were also able to train our staff in different methods needed for each of our different schools or programs. We use some of the resources to help with our COVID protocol as we started school again last year and implemented that throughout the year. And then, as you know, we've added additional devices and we continue to add devices. Our new initiative is at the junior high, where we're adding devices, but we continue to add devices and hopefully we'll eventually have devices K through 12. The one other thing that we did was we hired additional substitute teachers. As you know, last year, we hired more teachers throughout the year, not only to help us because of the need and the COVID protocols, but also because absenteeism. When people, you know, did become sick and we had a high absentee, or just to cover when we needed to do some professional development. So that definitely helped us last year. We had some summer school grant opportunities that were available. Dr. Edgar and Stephanie Howell were really instrumental in getting those grants underway for the summer. They supported additional childcare and some enrichment in that, and they offered summer school learning recovery opportunities, which were very successful. Our food and nutrition department did incredible this past year. They really, they won some awards, which was really impressive. They were recognized by ADE for some creative curbside programming. But if you look at our numbers, they're pretty impressive. We served 7.1 million meals over that period of time, and 87% of our students touched some form of the food nutrition program during their year last year, which was up tremendously as universal lunch was available to students and breakfast. I think it was pretty interesting to go out and watch our new high school as it opened that when, when you see it now and you see it operating, they also, they had about 85% of their population were eating and participating, which was pretty cool to go out and watch at a high school, because usually high schools have really low participation. So it was pretty cool to go out and watch. They won a food magazine, Best Concept for their pod markets. So if you go out, look at some of the fun concepts that are happening. Our kids are very food savvy, and so there's some really cool things happening in our elementary, junior high, and high schools. Again, we're up, I think, over $8 million in revenues, and then we were able to bring in over $3.5 million in a, in a profit last year. And that's really helped us as you go out and see all the renovation projects that are happening, not only in our central kitchen, but at our high schools and some of our K through 8 schools. So I had a great year in food and nutrition. Cash fund expenditures increased. Now, the reason for the cash fund expenditures, a number of funds in this area, but as we came out of COVID and out of a pandemic, you started to see tax credit come back with a lot more people participating again in activities. If it was fine arts or, or sports, you could see that, and our tax credit rose again on that side. Our community education, as people brought their kids back into the programs and as they accessed the summer school programs and enrichment programs, we saw an increase. Also, just within our intergovernment agreements, as we do things for East Valley Sports, as we, with our middle school, as we also do things with our Education Finance Reform Group and our partnerships with the city. So a number of different things that have been going on in our cash funds. Again, expenditures increased in those areas along with revenues as everybody came back out of the pandemic and start using it like they had prior to the pandemic. Bond, adjacent ways, building renewal, and debt service, it slightly decreased from the year before, but still, we spent $112 million between all of those funds. We had, we were finishing up the high school at the very end. We also had some projects for building renewal related to some of our roofs. We had, we pay off our debt service every year with principal and interest payments. And then we had some of our adjacent wave projects as we finished the high school, the last high school out there at Arizona College Preparatory School. So a total of 112 was down from the year before as we were finishing up some of our large projects. Fund balances, you'll see those throughout the reports on fund balance. Some budgets are related to how much budget capacity you can have. You can carry that over. Some on your cash funds are related to your cash fund balance. But ultimately, fund balances are really important. In nonprofits, they want 180 days of cash to be best practice in a nonprofit, and that's a minimum. But not for govern, government entities, but you still do need to have, in a sense, a contingency or a savings amount in some of your funds. Now, some federal funds do not allow you to carry anything over, and so we're really particular in those funds. We make sure we expense down and we don't waste dollars or turn dollars back. But other funds, we're very careful. The Classroom Site Fund is a very good example of that. Went from $400 per pupil to $700 per pupil, and that could quickly go back down. That money is earmarked for teachers specifically. It will not go to any other area, but ultimately, we're careful with that because we want to make sure we can sustain it and at least only have to tier down until those revenues are regenerated. So we're really careful with that. We know that there is a criteria that we probably at some point need to decide as a governing board, what amount do you want to spend of that cri, of that contingency at one point? And eventually, what does it look like? Now, for years, the district has done a really good job of making sure they have built a contingency so that when we go to decline and we're, we're in that phase, we can, we can decline gracefully by not cutting programs off that are successfully, successful, but tiering those down over time and then through attrition and retirement as staff goes, we don't have to do drastic cuts. And so we've prepared for that, and they've been, and actually, it's been for years, for 20-plus, 30-plus years, that this reserve has been building to make sure we can meet the needs over the next decade as we go to decline. Again, we need to meet, probably put together a regulation, I think Mr. Worth, I wanted to start that when he was here originally, and it's been talked about a number of times, so we're gonna bring that back to you in the future so that we have a best practice to bring forward. It tells you how much money we need in our reserves to sustain a healthy reserve, but also make sure we're spending the amount that's appropriate for students that are here in our schools. The Auditor General Report will be coming out in February based on the annual financial report, so we always put together what that looks like for you and where we think we will end. We think overall, you can see at the bottom, the total classroom spending will be at about 72%. I went back and looked at 2018, 2019, 2020, we were at, around 72 to 73%. Last year was kind of a different year, as you know, because we started school in fiscal year 2021, the year before last. We didn't start school, obviously, until September, October with our elementaries and then our high schools. And so a little bit different in 2021 and then with a full year in 21, 22. Some of the big changes, a slight decrease in the instructional portion. Administration stayed flat. Our plant operations went up because, part of that is because we are, we opened our high school, but also because we were back full force 180 days, where we didn't have 180 days of student instruction in 2021. So not as many were utilizing, in a sense, those buildings. Food service went up to 5.3% because we fed so many more students this last year even than we did in 2021. Transportation, as we came back full force and started all of our extracurricular activities and all of our trips, that, that increased again. The student support, as you know, we have additional needs, and some of our federal dollars reflect that with all the strategies we put in place with our ESAR dollars. And so that area has went up for student support and instructional support. But overall, we're right around where we have been in past years. I always like to recap on our fiscal health because I think it still all ties back to Journey 2025. And now, as we enter into Journey to Excellence, there's still things that we measure and are very important. Financial stability is super important for our school district, has always been important. We want to make sure that we have enough in our carryover balances and especially in particular funds so that we're prepared. If a pandemic comes, we were able to, during the pandemic, before federal dollars did come to us, we were able to spend about $20 million prior to getting any money from the federal government so that we could open up schools and have safe protocols in place. And so it's important that we have those reserves in case things happen. We, we are able to do that. We always, we make sure we are maximizing all of our federal and state funds. We receive a number of different funds, including we're the largest recipient of results-based funding and one of the, and the largest for the CCEIP, which is the funds received for earning advanced placement credits. Also, we don't receive as much federal stimulus money as everyone else because our, we do not have a high free and reduced population, but the dollars that we did receive, we're putting to good use to help maximize the gap or that bridge that our kids had from learning loss. Our, we, the classroom dollar is always important to us. It's a measurement tool for us as we always want to make sure that we are putting as much money into the classroom as possible, plus the instructional support area, and we're at 72%. That's always extremely important. We want to have low administration costs, and so we are still at 8.1%. We're very low compared to our peer groups and, but also for the state of Arizona, it's very low in Arizona, but we're extremely low, especially compared to our peer groups. Capital, strategic planning is extremely important as we started that process and just met with all of you on that. We want to make sure we're meeting those capital needs, but really, the capital needs reflect whatever the learning need that we have in our district is going on. We want to make sure that whatever the learning needs and the strategic plan is for meeting those needs, that really the buildings and the furniture and equipment meet those academic needs. That's important. They're just a tool to help us meet that need. And so we really want to make sure we have a, a plan that meets the, the Journey to Excellence goals for the future. We have a two thousand nineteen bond in place currently. We have about, we've spent about half of that. We have about half left, and we will be going over that with the board in the end of October, where we review all of our capital expenditures and the plan for utilizing the rest of our um bond funds from two thousand nineteen coming up in a month. Maintaining market share is super important for us, and it continues to be important as we always want competitive and attractive uh salary schedules and programs. As you know, we put um a big si- uh pack salary benefits package together with the additional dollars that the legislature approved for our staff in both the classified, certified and administrative areas. So it's important for us to stay attractive here in uh the East Valley and in the state, but also nationally if we can. Um, we want to make sure that we uh, we value our returning staff and we attract staff coming into our district. So both are very important. And then the benefit package is always important as we need to maintain. Mostly, that's in our health coverage, um, but also some of our and, and act, um, additional coverages that we have throughout our district. Partnerships, we have great partnerships and still do um with our uh different colleagues at other uh districts, but also with the state, um, the city and our private partnerships. And they're extremely important and helpful for us to be successful in the future. I br- I grabbed this slide from um uh an architect who brought this in to talk to us when we are planning on our strategic piece. And I think it just kind of captures everything. Um, but as we plan uh for the future, this is just a tool that we use, the A F R, to help us. But there's so many pieces as we plan um for the success of uh Chandler Unified School District. And all, everything really impacts our students. And I, I thought it's great, all of these tool, all of these areas. If it's our demographics, if it's our portrait of a learner, if it's our energy and our wellness plans, if it's our building renewal and capital plan, if it's our H R and how we develop professional development and, and address that in our schools to help our students and our teachers, or if it's technology, all of it is ultimately under the umbrella of Journey to Excellence. And every dollar we spend, it doesn't matter which area it's in to address what each need, is really so that we can have, um, we can make the best impact on every student that we have in Chandler Unified. So every dollar of that five hundred and fifty million dollars is important. If it's a staff member, if it's supplies, if it's capital, because ultimately, we want to have, um, we want to make a great experience for our students so they walk out of the store um and they have opportunities to be successful in the future. So three takeaways really quickly. Um, our district is in really good financial health. Um, it's, it's uh been a, a good year um overall for us. Um, we have a, a lot has happened in the plat- in the past to help us plan and be prepared when we knew we were going to start to decline. And again, if we feel like we've planned and aligned resources to meet those strategic goals. We also think that, uh, we believe that the funding streams have came back. We're, we're pretty much back where we used to be, like you saw in our cash funds. We're not, we shouldn't be receiving the federal dollars that we did. We had a huge surplus of those, a lot of one-time funds, not ongoing funds. So I think it's really important for us now is to look at the balances we have that are one-time and really plan for those and utilize those over the next handful of years. But also make sure we know we're declining and how do we still live within the budget that we do have that's going to be re- reoccurring? So it has um been restored. Large deposits of federal and state funds have came in. Again, how do we deal with those one-time dollars as we move forward and out of a pandemic? Um, and then it's going to be really important for us to continually use data. Um, as uh we've seen, we can, we can, you can go back and look at our data from the A F R. There's lots of spreadsheets on that. But really utilizing our data to help us plan um for the future is going to be important. Um, this is only one piece, like I keep saying, to help us um with uh aligning our strategic plan. But again, it's going to help us not only in reimagining our schools, but developing our staff, equipping our students um with the right curriculum, programs, technology, transportation and buildings that meet their needs. So again, this is just a tool, but it helps all of us as we move forward. All right, is there any questions on the annual financial report?
Thank you, Mrs. Berry. Um, shall we start with Mrs. Brunner? Do you have some questions? Or comments?
Um, I didn't have too many. Um, I did want to know with the food service percentage going up, um, are we predicting that's going to be less because we're getting less money in from federal?
Yes.
Okay.
Great question, yes. Universal lunch is gone, and so now we're, we'll see a huge decrease. And we already are seeing that. We're actually having an issue on participation nationally. Um, kindergartners through, I think, second grade have never participated um in, because the kindergartners, obviously, are brand new.
The families haven't filled out the forms to apply.
And they haven't went up to a cash register to do their name either or know how to pay. So it's not like we're just educating the kindergartners. We're doing kindergarten first and second. So it's a learning curve for our students and our staff. Even our staff have turned over during that period of time, so the cashiers are new to it all too. Um, but again, families are not used to filling out that application and then trying to get back into that habit. Um, we're seeing a lot of, a lot of uh difficulties in, in trying to navigate through that.
And I did just want, want to thank you for trying to make it easily consumable by everyone. Thanks.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Love?
Um, thank you. This was really easy to digest. I was wondering if you could go back to the strategic plan slide? Um, not that I have a question, but I couldn't see what the three were at the top.
Oh, sure.
Because it, can you just read that for me, sorry?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. So as we start at down the process of that strategic plan, we, we identify a number of things. And so the F R is just one piece, but all of these kind of help us as we align our resources in the future. One is our demographic trends. So what are those in our district and where are those at? Um, the value of the pillars of the portrait of the graduate, so our, kind of our, our pillars. Um, then sustainability, energy metrics, planning, wellness, all of those things that we take into consideration. Uh, and then the bottom is technology, adequacy and other infrastructure planning. And then we have H R strategies, professional development, building renewal, capital plan. There's others too, but it gives you an idea that all of those, they all cost money, right? They all are parts of what we do. But ultimately, when we put all of them together and the funding that belongs to each pot, that's ultimately how we decide where we're going to spend our dollars for the future.
Thank you for accommodating me and my vision on this one, because I was like, what did it say? Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm glad you pointed that out, and Lenny did a very nice job on that. It, it's just that our funding goes where the outcomes, that we're driven for the outcomes. And so that's, that's kind of our intentionality is that everything that we are looking at is producing that outcome, um, which our, you know, students achieving at high levels as well. But we're looking at now making sure that funding, and we have in the past too, actually um is put towards the areas that are needed most to produce those outcomes. Uh, starting with the educational goals going in and then assessing all that as we move through to see, has the money we spent produce those outcomes that we desire?
Yeah, I really do um appreciate this um, this graphic because I think it does, like, like Mrs. Brunner said, this was very easily digestible. But then to also see like how all of our goals are tied specifically to our funding, um, that's a really cool way of looking at it too, so.
Mr. Olive or Mr. Worth, are you both on?
I am.
I guess Mr. Olive is not. Mr. Worth, do you have any questions for Mrs. Berry?
Just a couple of clarifications. Lenny?
Yes.
Utility services and energy, what's the difference between those two?
Well, utility services, I think part of what we're trying to do on, on utilities is what are the best, what are the best capital improvements we can do to, to, to measure our utilities or to save on that side? So for example, lighting, H V A C, all of those things. What can we do on the capital side um to reduce utilities, but also improve um our energy? So it's kind of a combination of both.
Okay, by the way, I did Colleen's email, so I do have that in front of me.
Okay, great.
And then the, you and I have debated this before, but on the summary page, you know, you showed negatives. I don't understand why we don't just show an accounts receivable, so it moves it to zero.
On the federal page where you're looking for, on the federal funds?
No, the summary of the district funds, the
Yes.
The summary of the district funds.
Yes, so we actually have a negative balance currently in there. Um, and we finish our cash management reports, and then we actually don't receive those dollars until next fiscal year. So in our system and visions, it's a general ledger. It's different than business plus. Visions rolls those over as a negative balance. And then um we don't make an adjustment to that in the A F R because it pulls over. So the general ledger shows that as a negative amount. The auditors can change that in the financial, but actually on the A F R, because it is negative and it rolls into the next fiscal year until we receive it from the Arizona Department of Education, we just roll it over exactly how the system states it in visions.
Like one of them is building renewal.
Mm-hmm, right. And they have not reimbursed us for some of our grants. It won't come in until next year.
Now, what, what stops us from not just showing accounts receivable and bringing it to zero?
Well, you'd have to go into visions and actually report that as an accounts receivable, but that's not what's done in visions. In the past, with business plus, the business manager just had to go to the actual annual financial report, override it and put zero in. So in visions, when it, when we put that in, it rolls over as a negative. And so ultimately, that's why it shows in, on the federal page as a negative. Cause it actually in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, when you pull up the report right now until we receive the dollars, it is a negative.
All right, we can talk about it later.
Okay.
All right, that's all I know, thanks.
I'd like to also talk a little bit about um our food service. I know we have um been given some of this um information. And how has that affected our um guaranteed income with um Aramark?
Great question.
For this coming year and for last year?
Yes, so, great question. So we did plan for that. Um, this year, when we adopted a budget and approved a contract, we renewed their contract this year. We have a guarantee for seven hundred thousand dollars this year for this upcoming fiscal year, knowing that there is a difference um between um not being universal, the increase in labor and the increase in sup- and, and food costs. We do think we will make more money than that, but there is a guarantee right now. We also gave a large raise, right? That wasn't necessarily um, didn't reflect the food incre- or the price cost that we gave our families. So we gave a large increase, if you remember, to cert- to classified staff by fifteen percent. Supplies are up drastically. We are getting some additional relief from the federal government for food costs. Um, and then uh overall, we're seeing a participation decrease because there's no universal. So the guarantee for sure is seven hundred thousand dollars. We do think we'll make more than that, and we're hoping for that, but we do have a guarantee for at least seven hundred thousand.
And for the, I, I know we're doing some kitchen renovations at the central kitchen and down at Hamilton. Um, and I know that a lot of our, our um, um, food service monies are going into that to uh fund those renovations. How many more kitchens and facilities are we looking at um renovating? Are we just about done with these or do we have a lot more to go?
We have a few more to go, and I think as we decide when we reimagine schools, what are we going to do with those schools depends on what we'll do with those facilities. Um, we are walking each of those every Monday. Uh, Colleen Flannery, Tom Dunn, Jenny Brockamonte and myself go out to meet with schools along with Heather and Lauren. And we look at the schools, uh, and we, we're touring their food service department along with the entire school. There are schools that don't have walk-in freezers and we're needing to replace service lines. We have done a lot at almost every school, but we still have more to do. There's, there's additional things to do at all of our schools. But our high schools are the, have been the focus to increase part participation. We need to do some at some of our junior highs. We need to do some upgrades. We have done some upgrades at some of our elementaries, but we need more. And as we re- reimagine schools, that will be part of the conversation too. Because if, depends on what we're going to do at that school to what we need to remodel that kitchen to look like. Um, but there's still needs, and there are, it'll probably always be that way. We are going to utilize the money that we make in food service to do a majority of those renovations as best we can because those are, that's what those dollars are for. Um, so we're going to continue to do that.
It seems like um with all of the square footage that we have and all the different renovation needs that we have, it's almost like whack-a-mole. As soon as you finish one of them, you have to go start another project because um, you know, we have so many different buildings and so many different, built in so many years and renovated and things replaced in so many different years that the capital needs are, are really um a, a lot um to be able to keep those, maintain those buildings and um do those renovations that we need.
Yes, I, that's a great point. We have five point five million square feet and so across our forty-five campuses. And with that, a lot were built in one period of time, so we know big needs are coming up. Tom Dunn and his team are putting together, they've already started that last year with the replacement of preventative placement with its roofs and carpet and H V A C. But also, as we go through schools, it's updating. It's also looking inside kitchens to figure out how do we manage that better. Uh, it, we're looking at a lot of areas. Um, and again, when we re- reimagine these schools, what does it look like? And then what does the entire school need uh to operate to be successful there?
Good. Are there any other, uh, yes, Mrs. Brunner?
Sorry, I thought of one other thing. Um, and this wasn't necessarily um as visible in this presentation, but when um, kind of looking at the pie that the state puts out there, and we talked about how they moved that, so thank you for pointing out where the new location is on their website. Um, one thing that seems to be a pretty consistent um challenge for the district is uh transportation when it comes to efficient systems. And I guess I'm, this might not just be for you, but um when we see consistently, year after year, that this pocket is a little bit above the, the mean for the state, um, are, are there plans in place for how to create more efficiencies with that? Um, or look at, you know, when, how often we are um re-boundary-ing schools? And then we grandfather people in for six years, right? Like, and what is that doing to our transportation costs? Um, what does that look like? Maybe it's Mr. Narducci, I don't know. But um, it seems like that area is one where we need to maybe continually look at options.
Mrs. Brunner, you're, you're correct. Um, we had to, you know, when you want to be a district that wants to be everything to everybody, and you try to give a smooth transition when a school goes through rebounding, especially during the growth years uh that were happening. There are little pockets of populations, you're right, when you look at our school maps, mostly at the elementary level where a group was grandfathered in for a while, and we have sister schools for certain schools. So that does create a lot more demands that challenge efficiency on transportation. But when we're going through any repurposing and rebounding, we're looking right now at how many of those are older patterns that don't exist anymore? One, because the growth pattern grew out. Or two, uh, because some of the schools are closer, have room now for those students to attend. And it would be more logical that they attend a closer school rather than being bussed
Right.
to a farther school. And so those are be looking at, being looked at by our executive directors. And as we make any boundary change decisions, we're going to try to clean those up with advanced notification um that they're welcome to open and enroll in the school that they're at. But bus services will be provided to these schools, which, which would fit their needs a little better. We do want people, though, to have advanced notice and also to be, have the opportunity to be at the school that they currently are. Many parents have already made the change because they're trying to go to the school boundary that's closer to them. Um, and they're getting their kids there. Uh, but we still have to run buses if there's one, you know, or
Yep.
and that's, and that's the efficiencies that we will hope to build in.
And, and I know that sometimes there's some open enrollment folks that will drive to the edge of the route and kids hop on. So just, you know, looking at those kind of things, if we can, you know.
If there's room on existing routes, they've, they've, we, we have had a um, a, a protocol that they can approve through transportation if there's room on that route to, and it gets them to that school um that we have let them ride, correct?
And, and it makes sense if we're getting the A D M for that student. It might be of value if we have the room.
Correct.
It just might not be of value if we have to now have a second route. Because there's ten more kids and they're all open in a moment. That set us over that number? I don't, that's what I'm just trying to say, like those efficiencies would be great to hear, like what those ideas are. Thanks.
So I do have a question, uh, another question. The um, uh, cost of diesel fuel has just skyrocketed um since the first of the year. And I guess the question that I have is, obviously, that has impacted our transportation budget dramatically. And where, I mean, we get a certain amount of funding and an increase in funding um by the state for transportation, because that's kind of a whole separate um ballgame, you know, a whole separate account. So how, what happens if we aren't getting enough money for the fuel?
And, and there isn't an increase in, in funding for fuel. We get an increase based on inflation like related to miles driven in the very beginning, just like we do to the base support level, but that doesn't change then throughout the year. So we've been able to use our reserves to help cover uh that additional cost of uh gas and our, of diesel, and some on gas related to our white fleet. Um, but majority of that's diesel for all of our yellow fleet. But we're hoping that eventually it will come back down. Um, we do use our reserves now to cover those differences. Transportation is a money lot, where it's, it's a lost leader. We uh, the amount that we get per mile doesn't cover our actual expenditures, and it definitely doesn't cover the cost of our buses. So if we didn't have bond dollars that the voters had approved, um, we wouldn't be able to purchase the buses that we do now, which is, we're very fortunate to have because just our operational costs is our, is more than what we're bringing in per mile for our students. Now, part of that reason is we are a eighty-mile squared locked um school district, and it's based on miles driven, and we don't drive a lot of miles. on miles driven, and we don't drive a lot of miles necessarily to go to and from a school, and that's how we get reimbursed. But we have a lot of kids coming to and from on each of those buses. If you're a district that drives a long distance to pick up kids and comes back, it's a lot easier for you to make additional money. Now, every time we go back to the state to work on transportation, they would love to cut out the transportation revenue support limit adjustment, because part of it gets paid by taxes. So, the Tax Research Association would love to get rid of transportation, some of the costs for transportation. So, it's been something that hasn't been fought for down at the State Department as much, because a lot of them would like to get rid of it and not necessarily enhance it.
Wow.
But it's, it's definitely an expense for a school district.
Okay. If there's no other questions from the board?
In a discussion with another district last night, they were having trouble with their budget rollups. They are using, I think, Excel 97, and having dealt large spreadsheets myself. If you make a mistake, it can propagate through the whole system and really be difficult to figure out. So, the only thing I was going to ask you is, how do you do this? Is there something better they can use?
Sure, we use, well, we, we do use Excel for lots of things, but we use a software system called Visions, and it is, it's a million-dollar system. In a sense, it costs us approximately a million dollars to implement, but we use that for everything. We use that for our payroll, our accounts payable. We use it to track our fixed assets. We use it for our warehouse. We use other software systems to track some of our computers, some of our, our band equipment, our textbooks, but we use multiple software systems that integrate then with Visions. We use a workforce system that tracks our time and then gets integrated into Vision to be paid in payroll. We use a business intelligence system for, for our fixed assets that we go out and scan things, and then it gets imported in. So, we have a list of software systems that work well with Visions and then get imported in. For example, when an employee applies through the HR website, then that application can get inserted into Vision. So, there's a crosswalk on that. So, every time we implement a software system, we make sure that it works well with our main accounting system, and so that's really important. But we do use, then, all of it exports out to Excel, so we can run different functions. You'll see our internal documents, we can export out, and we compare all the time in Excel, but ultimately, the documents that we use are Visions, and that's our final document. One thing I forgot to say that I wanted to tell everybody was our department, and I have to say thank you, is Heather Cavier and Lauren Randall have been here all week and weekends for the past six, seven weeks, putting the annual financial report together. It's a lot of work, but they really do a great job, the two ladies. They're super intelligent, and they work really hard, and they've done a lot to put all this together. Plus that, they help everybody, learning school finance and then making sure that the sites know how to code things, how to report things, because that ultimately comes into this final report, and it needs to be accurate. So, they've done a lot of work, and I want to praise them, because they're really, they are the ones that did the annual financial report. And then Julie Craig helped me with the fun graphics. So, Laura, as I was trying to put that together to make it more of a story to talk about and do a better job representing that, thank goodness for Julie Craig and her skill set. So, just wanted to say that.
Mrs. Berry, you, I mean, it's dynamic, because I know we went over this before, and I think I told you, this is the first time going through it that I really got the meaning and the gist of not being confused in the PowerPoint slides, right?
Yeah.
This was amazing. But for those people that like spreadsheets and like Excel spreadsheets, they're all here.
They are.
So, they're all here on this agenda item, so you can look those up for full transparency if you like reading it a different way. I thought the, your team did a magnificent job in telling this story so that it could be understood by many people, and that's, that's what it's, that's what it's about with the AFR. And so, and then if you want to see some of these additional reports, they're all included in, in this, this agenda item as well. Good job.
Thank you.
Yes, and if you would please express our appreciation to your team with, for all the work that they've done on this, and Julie Craig.
I will. And Ben Frost has all the time.
Yes, of course.
I forgot to say thank you to her. She keeps me on track, that's for sure.
So, thank you so much, and it, we do have this on the agenda later this evening, so if we do come up with some additional questions between now and then, we will be able to ask them during the agenda item. So, thank you so much. We, our meeting will start at 7:00 PM.